Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of October 10, 2024. Please show me a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, otherwise known, or public law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice that 2024 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Application documents and plans have been made available on the township's civic clerk website at least 10 days in advance of this evening's meeting. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of planning board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Mr. Debs is absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Vander Vliet?
Here.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Vitale?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chikari?
Here.
Vice Chair Peas?
Present.
Chair Serrag.
Here.
Mr. Coice?
Present.
Ms. Ball?
And myself, the videographer, here.
Okay, thank you. I just want to quickly mention Mr. Debs' absence is due to that his son is being commissioned and officer in the United States Army, so want to thank his son for his service and for the fine parenting job that Mr. Debs did. So, thank you. Okay, got a few things before we get to applications. First up, consideration of meeting minutes. First set of meeting minutes, September 5 of 2024. Mr. Bernstein, who's eligible?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lepani, Vice Chair Peas, and then yourself.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peas?
Yes.
Chair Serrag?
Yes. Next up, meeting minutes, September 12, 2024. Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Wagner, I don't know why, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Vander Vliet, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Lepani.
Of whom I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any discussions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Vliet?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have a resolution for consideration. It's Homestead 239 LLC Redcom.
79.
Hmm?
279.
What did I say?
239.
Oh, that's a Freudian slip, okay. 279, stand corrected. File number 22-PB-05-S backslash MSPV. Mr. Bernstein?
This is the memorialization, for those of you who sat through, of the denial of the application for a warehouse on this site, the back-and-forth ongoing issue. I think we adequately set forth for those eligible members in the 44-page resolution exactly what occurred and why the board took the action it took.
Okay. Thank you.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Wagner, Chair Pro Tim Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Lepani.
Okay. All good.
I'll move that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussions? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Okay, and next up, planning board business. Announcement of the master plan informational session scheduled for October 30 of this year. Mr. Coice?
Got to plug in real quick.
Okay.
Yep. So, yeah, wasn't ready for that. So, as Chair of the Master Plan Subcommittee, we're going to do a workshop on October 30 for the purposes soliciting input from the public and to educate the public to a great extent on what a master plan is all about. And it's also results of Engage Hillsborough, which was an online portal that the public can put their input and answer questions as to what's important to them as residents and employees that may work in Hillsborough and not necessarily live in Hillsborough. So, I'd invite you all to be there and to participate in the information session on October 30, from 6:00 to 7:30. It'll be in this room right here, as there'll be early voting going on in the multipurpose room, and it'll be more of an informal type of arrangement where we'll have an information session down here, and it'll be, I think it'll be a worthwhile effort. Anything I'm missing?
No, that was great.
Thank you. And I see we have a QR code. Okay, excellent. Okay, we do not have any consideration of ordinances. So, now, I will open up from business from the floor for matters non this evening's agenda. If there's anyone from the public that would like to provide comment to the planning board, feel free to do so at this point. I do not see any takers in the audience, so we will move on to this evening's applications. First up will be TV LLC with file number 23-PB-02-SV with time of decision, January 31 of next year. The application, or the applicants requesting to be adjourned to December 5 of this year with notice due to a scheduling conflict and also the extension of time provided through the end of January of next year.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve that with those conditions.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the requests with those conditions?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Scoboe made a motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Chikari made a second. Any discussions? Okay, hearing done, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vander Vliet?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Here.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committeeman Lepani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chikari?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peas?
Yes.
Chair Serrag?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, for those board members who are not used to this kind of atmosphere this evening, this, the remaining applications do not begin with the word, letter W or the letter A, so this is the kind of meeting for some of you who remember we used to have in a time not that long, a time long ago.
All right, in another era, right, Mr. Coice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. All right, first up, Evergreen Energy LLC, Foothill Estates LLC, file number 24-PB-05-SP. Time of decision, November 1 of this year, Block 12, Lot 27.01, otherwise known as 39 Hamilton Road. The applicant is seeking a minor site plan approval to install a ground-mounted solar array at the rear of the existing facility with fencing and landscaping on the property. And the location of the property is in the Agricultural District, and with that, I will turn it over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Board members, may I be seated?
Yes. Oh, yeah, that's what we have them here for.
Very good, sir. For the record, James Burns, a law firm of Dembo, Brown &amp; Burns, on behalf of the applicant, energy, Evergreen Energy LLC. If we seem a little off-kilter tonight, it's because we are from South Jersey and we are all Phillies fans, so we hope that you take that into consideration tonight as we proceed. That being said, your counsel is correct, this is not a warehouse application or affordable housing application. We're here tonight requesting minor site plan approval associated with a proposed installation of a ground-mounted solar array.
Jim, I hate to interrupt you.
No, and for those of you, Mr. Burns and I spent time on Zoom together out of Camden.
I didn't recognize him if he was normally this. For the purpose of the record, as some members of the board pointed out on the agenda, we lost Mr. Coice, it is not 39 Hamilton Road, for which for some reason is on the printed agenda, it is 39 East Mountain Road.
Right.
So, the whole crew of Mets fans over here.
Mets fans.
Mets fans.
Let me move over a little bit. Keep going, keep going.
I hate baseball. I hate baseball, too.
Sorry, Jim.
No, that's okay. We are tonight, as counsel indicated, to hear from minor site plan approval associated with the proposed installation of a ground-mounted solar array and related improvements, including fencing and landscaping to the rear of the existing Foothill Acres Rehabilitation and Nursing Center, which is located at 39 East Mountain Road. It's also known as Block 12, Lot 27.01 on your tax maps. I'm happy to report that there are no variances requested or required with this application, and it really is a very simple application to provide solar, cost-saving, green, alternative energy to the nursing center that meets all of your ordinance requirements. We have received your planning director's review letter dated September 25, 2024. We are prepared to address that tonight. We really do not take any issue with that letter. And we have received your engineer's review letter dated October 1, 2024. It has been reviewed with your engineer. Our engineers have gotten together and talked, and we believe we really have no issues with that letter. And I have with me tonight, Mr. Chairman, Ryan Veezy, our engineer from Stan Tech Engineering, and Jacob Sussman from Evergreen Energy, and with your permission, I would ask that they be sworn. Jason?
We go one at a time, Jim, right? Just, we go one at a, we go one at a time.
It's Ryan Veezy, last name V as in Victor, E-A-S-Y. Jacob?
We're going to, Jim, we swear each.
Oh, as we go? Very good. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
No problem.
All right, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, we can start with Mr. Veezy. Ryan, if you could state your full name and affiliation for the record?
It's Ryan Veezy, civil engineer with Stan Tech, and, sorry.
And you are a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
And is your license in good standing?
Yes.
And have you been accepted by, by and testified before planning and zoning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
I would ask that Mr. Veezy be accepted as an expert in engineering, please.
Is there any objections? Okay, we accept, and get close to the mic, it's not long-range.
Very good. Now, Ryan, did you hear my introductory statement?
Yes.
Was my statement true to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
If you could, please describe, using the exhibits that we have, if you could just describe the site and then just tell the board what's being proposed with the solar array.
Okay. Just having a technical difficulty. It was connected, but. I restarted.
Mr. Chairman, we do have handouts that are identical to what would be on the screen, if that's permissible.
We're going to mark this A1. What is it, like, bar? I feel like I'm marking.
Okay.
You want to keep the mark happy? Mr. Burns, is your intention to introduce all of these documents in, before the board this evening?
That would be the plan, but we can keep them all A1, it's just a.
We're going to mark them individually, I guess.
Okay, very good.
So, Mr. Veezy, would please, once everybody has had a chance to get copies, and Mr. Coice again attempts to show his electronic capabilities. We have enough copies, folks? For purposes of the record, Mr. Burns, can we have Mr. Veezy indicate what A1 is and who the author of it is?
Absolutely. But we thought we had it.
I think he's in the back trying to get the camster to rev up and.
I guess we start just with this.
Yeah, so the first exhibit, A1, is an aerial exhibit with the proposed layout overlaid on the site.
That's the items in the upper left-hand corner?
Yes.
And that was prepared by your office, correct?
Correct.
And the purpose of this exhibit is to clearly establish for the board exactly where the solar-mounted array will be placed, correct?
Yes.
You want to go to the next one?
Yeah. The second exhibit that's included in the packet is the submitted site plan that was included in the application.
We're going to mark this A2. And could you indicate the same thing, Mr. Veezy, who the author is?
Yes, so the plans are prepared by Stan Tech from our office.
And the date on them is?
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Burns. And Ryan, with this A2 that's been presented, there are no variances requested or required as it relates to the placement of this ground solar array, correct?
Correct.
And if you could describe A3 for us, please?
A3 is our construction detail sheet, which is also prepared by our office, marked June 14, 2024, and this just includes a detail of the proposed security fence and a detail of the typical solar panel array.
And if you could describe A4 for the record?
Yeah, so the, A4 is an actual cut sheet provided by the manufacturer for the array itself, just to provide additional detail on the look of the array.
And it also establishes how the ground-mounted solar array will be.
Connected.
Connected to the ground, correct?
Correct.
Next exhibit?
A5 is the landscape plan that was prepared by our office as well from Stan Tech, and it is also dated June 14.
A6, if you could describe that?
A6, we've included, is an existing conditions plan, also prepared by our office, indicating the removal of just some vegetation in the area of the proposed array.
And A7?
A7 is the cover sheet that was included in our set, which includes all the zoning data.
And A8?
And then A is our boundary and topo survey that was also prepared by our office, and that is dated March 22, 2024.
So, if we could, if you could go back to A6 and just describe for the board existing conditions, what exists currently on site?
Yeah, so the existing facility is the Foothill Acres Rehabilitation Center. Right now, it just consists of the existing building and parking. In the rear, there is an existing dwelling, and then there's a storage building that is connected with an emergency access, or with a gravel road, and then circulating around the rear of the building, there's a garden area behind the building, and then a emergency fire access lane around the existing building. And then in the area of the proposed array, there's just some lawn area with a couple trees where the array is proposed within this property.
So, we are not, we are not proposing any changes to the existing nursing facility, correct?
Correct.
The only proposed change for this property would be the placement of the solar, ground-mounted solar array in the area identified on this plan, correct?
Correct.
Now, you did note that there are trees that are noted on this plan. Will those trees be removed as part of the solar array installation?
They will, and a, a tree removal list and compensatory required trees was included on the landscape plan, indicating the additional trees required to be planted on site.
So, it is our intention to work with the board engineer as it relates to placement of trees on the property and also address the compensatory replacement of trees that are being removed with this application, correct?
Correct, you know, we, we agreed for the remainder that we can provide the additional landscaping on, along the southern property line.
Now, if we can go to exhibit A1, I'm sorry, exhibit A2, describe for the board exactly what is being proposed as it relates to the ground-mounted solar array.
Yeah, so the array that's proposed consists of, it's 1,634 panels. The panels themselves are, consist of, there's a, the max height of the actual array is 30 inches, and then it's a low-ground array, and it's, it's mounted with thin brackets, and then there's a screw foundation for each of the arrays that goes in the ground to anchor it within the facility. And then surrounding that, we have a clear area, and then a proposed five-foot-high galvanized chain link fence to secure the array itself, and then there's a, at the, what's the eastern corner of the array, there's a 10-foot-wide chain link gate in that area.
So, for the array itself, there's no variances, but we will require a waiver for the proposed security fence, correct?
Correct, yes. The, the actual security fence falls within the landscape buffer along the southern property line.
But that fence is required to properly secure the, the solar array?
Correct.
And work with the, the board engineer to make sure that its placement is well, you know, properly placed and well-screened in the buffer, correct?
Correct.
Is there anything really else related to this application?
I mean, that's it, I mean, nothing, nothing more related to the proposed solar array.
So, when I said it was rather straightforward and simple, I guess I wasn't kidding, correct?
The whole closure of my.
I'm sorry, so it is, it really is that simple. We're simply looking to place the variance-free solar array on the property for the benefit of the nursing facility, correct?
Yes.
Very good. I have no further questions for Mr. Veezy. Mr. Manheim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Mr. Veezy stated, we spoke on the phone earlier today, he indicated, and I think he's mentioned this evening, that they would agree to address the comments that are listed in our letter of October 1, and our office is willing to work with the applicant to address those. I just want to bring one item to attention, there was a review letter from Chief Winiger, and I understand Mr. Veezy has agreed to install the NOX box on the gate, that we would work with our office to make sure there's no obstructions to access. And then the last comment Mr. Winiger had was, provide an emergency access roadway around the array. I tried to get in contact with the chief before the meeting, but he's on vacation this week. There is, on the full right-hand side, an existing gravel road, which would connect as an emergency access, so I would submit that, and I think the applicant has agreed, that we could work out and address whatever the chief's additional concerns are.
That is correct. We're happy to work with the chief. We believe that we can provide that, or emergency access does exist that would enable the fire department to utilize it, God forbid, in the event of any fire, so, but we're happy to work with the chief and with Panotti to make sure we can meet, satisfy their, their needs. And I forgot one more question for you, Ryan. The engineer's letter called out certain ordinance requirements, certain sections of the ordinance. You've reviewed the ordinance requirements and the sections called out, and are we in a position to address all of the conditions and requirements of those ordinance sections?
Yes.
And have you discussed that with, with the board engineer as to how we can address those?
Yes.
And we're willing to work with the board engineer to make sure that those are complied with?
Correct.
Very good. That's all.
It is?
We have no further comment.
Well done.
Board members, questions, comments?
Yes, I had a question, I believe it was on exhibit four, where you have the picture of the solar panel?
Yes.
What do those screws, what do they screw into? Is there a footing under?
So, it's just a screw foundation, it's just got it on there, and it's just anchoring into the ground.
How deep does that go?
I believe the, there's two options, and I believe on this one, it's only 20 inches.
So, a little less than two feet. It just goes into the ground, there's no casing, there's no cement, there's no nothing.
Yeah.
So, nothing, you get a strong wind, seems to be a topic as of the last couple of days. These things are not going to come flying out of the ground, not that we have them here in New Jersey, but.
Correct, yeah. And then from the manufacturer, they include the wind testing that they've included based on the anchoring on there.
And they're to what wind speed?
You know, I'd have.
It says wind tunnel tested.
I see that, yeah, I'd have to verify from the manufacturer exactly what they have on there, we can pull that up.
And where are the panels manufactured? Are they in the United States, or are these outsourced outside of the United States?
That would be a question for Mr. Sussman.
Okay, when you, when you come up, I guess I'll answer, if you want to answer it now, that's.
We'll wait, because we need to square them in first.
Okay. And about what percentage of this solar field, what percentage of power will this provide the facility that's there?
It's another question.
Another question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we got two questions for the next witness. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, no one else is asking about this, so it's probably a dumb question, but, so, just looking at this one plan, the 75-foot side yard, it looks like the array and the fence go across that, is that not an issue because it's not a permanent structure, or?
Well, the ordinance has, for solar, it's a 50-foot setback.
All right, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Is there any concerns, or if you have a broken panel, is there any concern for any, I know there's lead, cadmium, and so on in the panels when they're manufactured, and especially if they're manufactured in some countries, I don't think they're manufacturing standards or as strict as ours. Is there any danger of any lead contamination or any other contamination on the surrounding soil?
That, again, would be another question for, for Mr. Sussman.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're.
No, that's. That's fine.
You skated on that one.
I'll ask an easy engineering question. So, is there any soil disruption in this plan, or are they just putting the panels on the existing grade?
Correct, the panels are on the existing, the only disruption are the screws and then the fences.
So, you don't need soil conservation, nobody, because you're less than 5,000 square feet.
Correct, and we've agreed to include the total disturbance on our plan to demonstrate.
Good to have flat land.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
You said you were going to remove those trees that are located in here?
Yeah, there's several trees that are located within the solar array, I'll bring them, if you go to the existing conditions plan, which I believe was A6? A6, yes.
Usually when you remove trees, you have to replant trees somewhere.
Correct, so we're. Yes, we are going to do that. Yeah, on our compensatory, or on our landscape plan, we have additional trees going along the northern property line.
Thank you.
Can we get an indication of what that, how many trees are being removed and what's being replaced?
Yeah. So, the total number of compensatory trees required are 28, and then there's a total of, I want it on the record. There's a total of seven trees that are actually alive that are being removed. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question about, I'm curious about the screws, I find this intriguing. The last time we had somebody drilling, pre-drilling holes into the shale here in Hillsborough, so are these tested in, like, what type of soil, because the soil in your part of the state is different from the soil here in Hillsborough, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, and I know.
Is this right of refusal here, or what, on these, on these screws going in? I mean, once it's in, it's in.
Yeah, I was going to say, for these, we actually have several applications now throughout the state that are now using that. I'm.
I'm used to the typical post and concrete foundation, so.
I'm intrigued, okay.
I got a question just based on curiosity here. The direction of the solar panels, I'm assuming it's because just for efficiency?
Well, yeah, it goes from south to north, so.
Got it.
If you look at, like even just the first exhibit, the property's running, the southern property line is along kind of the clearing where the existing, there's an underground pipeline there, and the northern property line's on there, so they're aligned to get the majority.
It would just seem like, you know, if you were to turn it a little bit, it wouldn't go over the buffer, but I understand why it's there. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, may I have a motion to open the public?
Do you want to hear from Mr. Sussman?
Do one at a time.
We do things here a little, you know.
Understood.
A little backward.
Second. One favor? If there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony?
Don't rush.
Yeah, I know. We're just not used not having much public, so. All right. There's no taker, so thank you.
Very good. So, per permission, Mr. Chairman, my next witness would be Jacob Sussman. Jacob, if you could come up.
Yeah, one question. Can I affirm instead of, sir? Sure.
Do you affirm that any testimony you give, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth?
Yes. Jacob Sussman, J-A-C-O-B-S-U-S-S-M-A-N.
And Jacob, if you could, just state your position with Evergreen Energy.
Chief Operating Officer.
And as Chief Operating Officer, I hope you're in a position to be able to address these questions that were raised by the board. They're good questions. The first one that I wrote down was, how much power is generated by the panels?
Okay, each panel generates 400 watts, and the plan is to build out the whole site enough power to generate 1.2 million kilowatt-hours for the year. So I just, right before we headed out on the trip, we, I checked a file on the nursing home, nursing homes in general consume a lot of power. They consume north of 2 million kilowatt-hours a year, so we're aiming to, you know, generate about 60% of their power.
Which would be a benefit certainly to the nursing home and to its residents, correct? Cost was.
Correct.
And if you could, a question was raised as to broken panel and what, if any, concerns there are or any contamination concerns there may be. Did I direct that directly, man?
I will say that I'm not an expert on that matter. I do want to say that these panels are manufactured by a South Korean company, really premier Bloomberg Finance Tier 1 company, Hanwa Q cells. It's one of the largest and strongest, it's one of the biggest solar panel manufacturers. Very highly reputable company. I do not have a lot of information on any of the, any contamination, but like the drawings indicate, the panels are lifted off the ground. So even if, I don't think there's, I never heard of any lead in solar panels, but even if there would be, like it wouldn't get into the ground because they're raised off the ground.
If it's broken, and say it rains, that's how it can happen. I know there's also issues with the heat generated by them, and I forget exactly how that occurs. I mean, I'm trying to remember the details of it. I read this a while back. As the panels, I think they kind of like, the panels themselves kind of heat up as the process is going through, and there's something, and then there was something about how it affects the soil and the plant life around it. So that was also a concern. And I should have, I'm sorry, I should have tried to locate that article again and be a little more aware, or will be able to give more information as to what the potential hazards are.
Jacob, are you aware of any potential hazards as it relates to?
I am not aware of anything.
And far as heat generation, fire, that's something that people talk about, but it's truly not something that, these are top-of-line new generation panels, correct?
Correct, and there's a lot of safety equipment. Everything's compliant with the most current, right now, I believe it's the NEC, National Electric Code 2017, so everything will be compliant with that. And, you know, there's full protections and all these different types of protection that if the system sense anything wrong, it would just, you know, power down everything to safe levels.
But your intention to comply with all related.
Yes.
Federal regulations, correct?
Yes.
Cliff, did you do any research on that, on any of the hazards, based on the last change?
Another question was wind capacity.
Yeah, so we actually did a site test with these screws on the specific site to see, you know, it's called a push-pull test. Bought a tripod and attached metal, like a metal, you have metal rope, and they attach it to the back of a truck, pickup truck, and drove it to see if they could pull it out of the ground, and they were unsuccessful. So, you know, we definitely wanted to have that, you know, the manufacturer of the racking system told us that typically there's no issue, but, you know, exactly how you had that question, we wanted to have that level of comfort as well. So we, you know, we did a real-life test, and thankfully, everything was very secure.
Just a follow-up question on that. Is that then the first of this type of array to go in with that type of anchoring and mounting system?
For Evergreen Energy, yes.
Is the power that you had made reference, I guess you said about 60% of the power would be going to the nursing home facility, is it kind of a closed-loop system? So if there's extra power generated, is that going back out to the current utility provider? Or is it staying on-site, or how does that work?
Okay. It's a bit of a combination of the two. So, so the way it works in New Jersey, something called net metered, so we have a net, Board of Public Utilities, it's something called net metered program. So the way it works is like this, and again, a nursing home might be a little different just because it uses so much power. It's not necessarily ever be in a situation that there's export, but, you know, think of a different solar array on a business, let's say, you know, July 4th, not a lot of people in the office, and, you know, the electricity gets generated, the electricity has to go, like it can't, so what happens is, is that the, it generates electricity, like you're saying, goes back to the grid. However, a net metered means that when you finish a solar project, the utility puts in a new meter, a net meter, and it can measure electricity going into the facility and also out. So let's say you deliver to the utility 1,000 kilowatt-hours of generation that you didn't use, it would offset your future purchases. So everything will be to the benefit of the facility, even if, you know, physically there is something being delivered on certain days out.
There's no storage.
There's no storage capability, but in lieu of that, you have this flexibility to balance out the.
Exactly, exactly.
Power, okay.
And that's why the utilities, you know, there's, we already have approval from PSNG, and one of the first things is that the utility has to review the application to make sure because of this, because that the power potentially could go back, they always view it as, well, what would happen if the facility building, whatever you're proposing, you know, would close operations, or what happened to all the power? And they have to make sure that the, that the grid, that their circuits and their transmission lines could handle 100% of all the power being generated. And we have that approval already.
I threw a question, Mr. Mayhem. Just kind of related. Does the construction codes talk about wind, I'm going to say, wind resistance, I'm going to say, for a black, better word, for solar arrays? Or there's some requirement that they need to meet, you know?
Well, when they go for a building permit, they're going to come under those regulations, but there's nothing in the Land Development Ordinance regulations that would regulate that. But I'm confident that the building department will be looking at that when they submit for their building permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's been our experience as well, yes.
Okay. And just kind of getting back with these anchors, they're not, there's no, is there any concrete or is it just strictly, they're getting twisted into the soil?
There's no concrete, they're just, yeah, twisted into the soil.
Okay. Okay. Have you installed these in the state?
We have not used this product yet. It is, we have, I mean, this Aero Compact, the manufacturer has installed, and they installed in the state.
You went to check it out, right? There's an existing one in North Jersey. You went, you were there?
Yeah. So there are installations of such in New Jersey, but not, where they were not performed, installations end up in, by Evergreen Energy.
Okay. Now, I'm just curious, because 20 inches, I know typically with footings, you got to go three feet.
Yeah.
Below the freeze line.
I mean, I did a lot of concrete work years ago, you know, for foundations for power equipment. So, I mean, to me, I'm thinking it should be set in concrete. So are the, at least on the, say, the threads on the bolts fairly long? I mean, so at least it has something to grab on?
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're not like a typical house screw that you hang a.
Right, we call them, yeah.
Very, very thick and rugged threads, yeah.
Is there, who's going to maintain it? Or is there a plan, and is there a plan to inspect every three months, every six months? Just go out and kind of kick the screws?
In terms of, in terms of mechanically, electrically, everything?
Everything.
Yeah. We actually monitor, like our systems, weekly, and so we could, you know, nowadays, you know, with internet, you could actually monitor sites remotely. So we're constantly checking to make sure that everything's working, and we're able to notice any deficiencies and address them when needed.
Sure, remotely, but, so I guess the, in conjunction with that, literally going out and putting eyes on the, just walking up and down the array to make sure that some screw hasn't come loose or something hasn't been damaged. Is that, is that the?
How often do you do a physical and take this?
Yeah, I mean, different sites are different. We could, you know, we could come once a year, but, you know, typically what happens is that through, you know, every once in a while, we have to go to the site anyways to tweak something, to fix something, so we're, you know, we're sort of constantly at the site regardless, so we're, we're there.
Would the, would the Foothill Acres maintenance people be responsible for doing that, or is that something?
We're responsible. Part of our contract, it includes an initial five-year maintenance, O and M, everything. So we're fully servicing it for the first five years regardless.
Okay.
So would Foothill Acres, if they're maintenance, saw something, they can put a call in for an unscheduled visit?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So I'm looking at the, back to the screws, just trying, it appears in the breakdown, there's a screw at each end of each panel in the picture. How long are these panels? Are they six feet, four feet?
I'd say about six feet by three feet, I mean.
So theoretically, every six feet, there's a screw, basically holding this panel down, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So that's a lot of screws. So I was trying to understand, looking at the breakdown, how far apart, and we're talking about anchoring this system down, so every, every spars at each panel is six feet, roughly?
Correct.
Okay.
And I think this is a good exhibit because it shows you how big those screws really are, and they do have a very significant thread to them.
And then my follow-up question to Ms. Miss question, are the panels UL-listed or has any, they are of a government approval, right?
Yeah.
That's all.
Do I need to do reopen to public? We're already open to the public, so good. Anyone from the public would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come forward. Still no public. Videographer, you can come in if you want.
We get the planner to come forward, he's in a.
Okay. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's really all we have with the application. We appreciate the questions. For not, for only doing warehousing applications, they were, I'm impressed with the questions you've asked, so.
Yeah, he said, that need, you have to turn the application down.
I just want to say, very impressed with the questions that were asked, and we hope we've addressed them, and as we've indicated, we are happy to comply with your professional review letters, and we'll work with your fire marshal to make sure that he's satisfied with what we're proposing.
So now I actually have to ask the public, since they've rested. Anyone from the public would like one last bite at the apple, as we would call it? Okay, still no public, so I will ask for a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public.
Second.
One favor?
Aye.
This would be a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve Evergreen Energy LLC, also known as Foothill Estates LLC, file number 24-PB-05-SP, block 12, lot 27.01, 39 East Mountain Road. Pursuant to the application submitted, all exhibits, all conditions approved upon confirmation and compliance with all board professional reports and any other statements that were placed on the record during the pendency of the hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Scobbo. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Wagner made a second. Any final comments? Okay, roll call, please. Remember, roll call, Michael?
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. VanderVleet.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Kamino Minnavani?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chikarelli?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pezen?
Yes.
Chair Saraj?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We have our IT director in the back. He was asking if he could take a recess just for a few moments, and he believes he could get the system back up and running.
Okay, want to take what, 10 minutes? All right, I'm going by my computer time. It's 7:55, so we'll reconvene 10 minutes, 8:05.
You have a round two.
Okay, we're back in session. So next up, RB Manufacturing LLC, solar array, file number 24-PB-08-SP, with V in parentheses, time of decision, December 12th. Should that be 24, or is that 20, or is 25? It says 12/12/25.
Probably 24, but I'll leave that to the assistant planner.
Yeah, it's 24.
Okay.
Get the right address?
Well, we'll see. Well, I mean, well, I know it's the right road because I know where Wreck-It Bank Kaiser is.
Well, isn't the motion to dismiss?
I ain't going there. Block 201, lot 11, 799 Route 206. The applicant seeking minor site plan approval, C-bulk variance requested, and waivers to install a ground-mounted solar array in the front of the existing warehouse facility, and that's not the W word, but it's for Wreck-It Bank Kaiser, existing, it's a manufacturing facility, so. With fencing and landscaping on a property that is located in the LI, otherwise known as the Light Industrial Zone, and I will turn it over. Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good to be back for this application.
Good to have you.
For the record, James Roseford Law Firm of Demo Brown and Burns, on behalf of the applicant, RB Manufacturing LLC. As the chair indicated, we're here tonight requesting minor site plan approval associated with the proposed installation of a ground-mounted solar array and related improvements, including landscaping, subsign relocation, and fencing and buffering on the existing building located at 799 US Route 206, also known as block 201, lot 11 on your tax maps. This solar array is actually an existing solar array on the roof of the building. The applicant is proposing to relocate it off the roof and place it on the ground-mounted solar, as a ground-mounted solar array. When we initially filed the application. application, we were under the impression that a variance was required for the six-foot-high security fence, where five-foot maximum fence is permitted. As it turns out, that's not a variance, it's a waiver. So we do not need any variances as it relates to this application.
Closer to the mine.
Oh, sorry. And with your, just like your prior application, we believe this is rather straightforward as well. It's very similar, as, as it relates to the type of panels that are being proposed, and is to provide green alternative energy to the existing building. We have received your planning director's memo, and your engineer's review letter, and your fire marshal's review letter. We have no concerns or comments as it relates to those letters, subject to the testimony that has been requested. And we can comply with all the ordinance requirements and notations or, that were provided in the engineer's report. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to reintroduce Mr. Vezie, our engineer from Stantec Engineering.
Mr. Burns, do we need to?
Before, we swear, Mr. Vezie, and Mr. Coys, for my own edification, the proposed location of the solar array in relation to other potential uses on nearby property, where this is nowhere near the other property. Thank you. I'm getting the shaking of the head from Mr. Lapani.
I'm sorry, I don't know what you're referring to.
The other property owned by RB property where the ShopRite made.
Oh, no, 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 no. That, that property is only that name because Wreck-It Bank Kaiser sold it to that entity. Correct, yeah.
For purposes of the record.
Yes, for the purposes of the record.
I assume we are still having technical difficulties?
We are. Unfortunately, the, it's not gonna be working tonight.
We can all, we can all.
I was gonna say, in another era, we used to have them up on.
Boy, this is, this is, this is like the old days. The only thing missing is the, you know, they can put it up on the easel.
Yes, if you need that, we have it.
All right, this is going to be, I swear, Mr. Vezie, and again, Mr. Lombardozzi.
Yes, ma'am. It's Ryan Vezie. It's V-E-A-S-Y. Mr. Vezie, again.
Mr. Vezie, in the last 20 minutes, has any of your professional situation changed and/or your licensing?
Not that I'm aware.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, counsel.
Please continue.
Mr. Vezie, did you hear my introductory statement? Yes. Was my statement true to the best of your knowledge? Yes. And going to the exhibits that we've handed out to the board, if you could start with the cover sheet, and mark, we'll mark that Exhibit A1, if you could describe what we're seeing with the first page of the exhibits? Yes, so the first Exhibit A1 consists of an aerial of the property. It includes the array that is placed along 206, and it also includes the landscaping and, and buffer that's proposed. And this plan was prepared by our office. So this array will be placed along Route 206, but it is our intention to significantly buffer this array, correct? Correct. And there's a 60-foot-wide buffer required along 206. And that, this exhibit shows some trees that currently exist. At the front of the property, those trees will be removed, and they will be replaced with a compensatory tree replacement plan that will be reviewed and coordinated with the board engineer. Is that correct? Correct. All right, if we could go to the second page, if you could describe that as Exhibit A2? So the second plan is the proposed site plan that was included with the application that was prepared by Stantec. And this plan is dated August 21st, 2024. And again, that shows the exact placement of the ground-mounted solar array, correct? Correct. Exhibit A3, if you could describe that? So Exhibit A3 is the construction detail that was included as our plan set. We're back to the exhibits. This includes the proposed fence detail and solar array that's being placed on here. And this is also dated August 21st. And if you could, using this exhibit, if you could just tell the board the, the exact height from the, of the bottom, from the bottom of the array to the, and the height from the top of the array? The proposed array, the max height is 95 inches, and then from the bottom, it's 24 inches for the minimum height.
And the purposes of the record, Mr. Chairman, apparently, technology has won, and therefore they are, the exhibits for the moment are also up on the screen, so that the, the reason I make this comment is because this meeting is being videoed, et cetera, so the public should understand that the prior two exhibits, that Mr. Vezie indicated, were provided as part of a package that the board also has on paper. Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Burns.
No, thank you, counsel. And if you could, Ryan, just, this is, these solar arrays are being installed a little differently than the prior application. These are not being screwed in, correct? No, these are also screwed. Oh, are they screwed in? This is the new technology that's being utilized. Just look like a different, is it a different type of screw that we're working with? Or is it similar to what was? It's different, and this is actually, the post itself contains the screw at the bottom. It's all one continuous application, whereas the other one was just directly driven in the ground with straps. This is part of the post itself. Very good. Thank you for clarifying that. And this also shows the gate that's proposed to, to the security fence. Is that correct? Correct. Next exhibit, please.
Before we get to that, can we go back to A3 for a second?
Sure. A3? Yes.
Right there. The screw proposal is in the upper left-hand corner, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. One more thing, can we go back to A1, the, the color picture?
You said A1? Yes.
Okay. Can you indicate, if you're aware, Mr. Vezie, where the current solar array is on the roof at RB Manufacturing?
So it's actually, it's covering a majority of the roof. It's, it's spread throughout the roof itself. And right now, in just the aerial that we pulled, which this is a, Mr. Sid aerial, it doesn't include the array shown on, within the rooftop.
Thank you.
Ryan, if we could go to A4, is this, we will mark this, next one is A4. Can you describe this exhibit, please? Yeah, so A4 is the proposed landscaping plan, showing the landscaping around 206 and also along Hillsborough Road. And using this exhibit, if you could please identify the amount of trees that are going to be provided with this application to buffer the solar, solar array? Yeah, so the, there, there's actually several existing trees, mature trees, within this area that are being removed as part of the array installation. And right now, there's a total of 146 compensatory trees that are required. We've shown on the plan currently 98 trees. And then we've discussed, working with the engineer, to provide additional trees throughout the site to try and make up the additional 48 compensatory trees that are required. And it's my understanding you wanted to work with the engineer, because you wanted to make sure that the replacement or compensatory trees would be placed in an area that did the, had the most benefit, correct? Correct. And you didn't want to make that judgment, you wanted to work with the, with the board engineer to, with them to make sure it was done properly? Between the application, applicant for operations, and then the board engineer for placement as well.
So the notation at the bottom of what's been marked is A4, which indicates total number of off-site contribution. Trees at 48 is no longer applicable?
Correct. We work with the engineer to try and place as many of these trees throughout the facility itself.
And the, the exhibit will be revised accordingly?
Correct. Be revised accordingly after discussion with the engineer. And if there is any shortfall, we, we can work with the contribution. But it's our intention to try to replace as many trees as possible.
Thank you.
If you can describe A5 for us, Ryan? A5 just shows the existing conditions, the existing trees that are out here. There's also, and I'll point to it on the screen, within the approximately center of the site, there's an existing identification sign that's being relocated slightly closer to 206, just to be outside of the array footprint. And then we've actually just shown the ground disturbance on this plan, which is where the conduit will be going in from the end of each array, and then connected back to the building. And relocation of the freestanding sign would require a waiver, because the placement will be in the, relocated in the residential buffer, is that correct? Correct. But that's the best placement for this sign, correct, based on visibility and the impacts of the solar array? Correct. And we also need a waiver for the proposed six-foot-high security fence. Given its location, you felt it best to provide additional foot height above the maximum required of five feet? Correct, just based on the, the much taller panels that are up to 95 inches. Okay, and then the purpose of that fence is to screen and to also provide security for the solar arrays, correct? Correct. And with this one being in the front yard, this one's proposed to be a black vinyl-coated chain link fence. Very good. Next exhibit would be A6, I believe? Yes. And this just depicts the, it's a cover sheet that includes the zoning chart for the property. And A7, if you could describe that exhibit? And A7 is just the boundary and topo survey for the facility, just showing the extents of the property itself, and then the detailed topographic survey of the front portion of the property. So now that we've kind of given the board a general sense of what's being proposed, why don't you just describe generally the existing conditions, and then exactly what's being proposed with these solar arrays? Yeah, so the facility itself, this is an open lawn area along Route 206. There's, we're not proposing any modifications to the existing access drives for both the warehouse or the manufacturing facility, or the existing parking lots for the employees, which is accessed off of Hillsborough Road. The area in the front where the array is proposed, we're placing the fence, you know, the array outside of the 60-foot-wide buffer. And then it just consists of an access that, with the gate that will be provided off the drive off of 206. There is, on this one, just due to the larger array, we do have an access roadway within the fence, just stabilized turf area. And then there, there's just buffering proposed along 206. We are also proposing, it's not shown on this plan currently, but additional buffering along the front of the array on Hillsborough Road. And then we've included some compensatory trees in the existing lawn area between the two parking lots off of Hillsborough Road. And then there'll be some additional landscaping that's proposed. The board engineer made some under landscaping comments of his review letter, identified certain species of trees that are, that would like to see planted on the property. Are we agreeing to work with the board engineer to, to determine the proper species? Correct. The, the trees that are proposed along, there was deciduous trees proposed along 206. We're gonna modify some of the trees there to propose the recommended evergreens. And then there'll be additional evergreens proposed along Hillsborough Road. And we've agreed to work to provide, you know, several species, so then they're all one. And you testified that there'll be limited disturbance as it relates to the, the installation of the solar array, so we do not have to worry about providing a soil erosion or sediment control plan, is that correct? Correct. The actual, the posts themselves equate to about 685 square feet, based on all the posts, and then between the, the total are about 2,000 square feet between all the conduit and disturbance related to that. And have you reviewed all the ordinance sections noted in the Panotti review letter? And are we able to comply with the ordinance sections outlined under the heading General Comments? Yes. Is there anything you want to add as it relates to the solar arrays themselves, as far as construction? Or does the exhibit provide a, identify the proper specifications that you'll be working with as these arrays are installed? Yeah, I mean, outside of the actual structure that the panels are going on, the existing panels are just being relocated off the roof. So they're, these were installed, I believe, the applicant indicated about five years ago, within the rooftop. And then outside of that, these panels are, there's 3,168 of them that are being relocated within the actual array itself. Very good. I have no further questions from Mr. Vezie, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mr. Vezie and I spoke earlier this afternoon, and I believe his testimony tonight concurred with our conversation, and that they agree to work with our office and address all the comments in our letter dated October 4th, 2024. And at this time, we have no outstanding items.
Thank you. Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing we noted when we were reviewing the plans is that seems like the monument sign is gonna need to be moved.
That's proposed as part of.
Yeah, that's proposed, isn't it? Okay, it's in the plans?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll go to the, I'm gonna go to the landscaping plan, just because it shows some lower landscape around it. If you can see the hand right here. That's the proposed relocated.
Is it gonna be the same sign, or is it a new one?
Yeah, they're, they're looking just to relocate the same sign, and then we're proposing new landscaping around it. I may have called it a freestanding sign. I apologize if I misstated it.
That's fine, yeah. We have no further comments.
Thank you. The board members?
I just had a question. The panels are being relocated off the current facility. I guess my question is, why?
From discussions with the applicant, they had a, a fire on the facility previously on the roof, and then it was trapped with the panels, and their insurer is requiring them to relocate the panels as part of this repair. So it was part of their agreement.
That would be the same for residential now, if that seems to, I know it's not, I'm just curious why they were coming off, because most, like, this building has them.
Yeah.
Most buildings have the most, it's curious as to why. So it's an insurance?
Yeah, this is required by their insurer. And the fire was not, just for the record, Ryan, the fire was not related at all to the solar panels. It was something that started in the building, and it's, apparently the, the insurance company would prefer to have them ground-mounted, so that it doesn't impact, suppress any further future fires, if they have any. We hope they don't.
Thank you.
I have a sim.
Go ahead.
Are you sure? I have a similar question before, just curiosity. Is the reason for the location based on efficiency of the sun or something, you know?
Correct, yeah. So this is essentially, 206 is almost running directly north to south, and that's, that's how the arrays themselves are laid out.
Got it. Because once again, it seems like in this part of the property, it would fit, just visually.
Yeah, and just because you're asking the question, there's actually, they have a thing they call helioscopes, and they lay them out to get the most efficiency that they can, based on the sunlight.
That makes sense. All right, thank you.
Okay. So you're asking for a waiver to increase the fence height to, from five to six feet? Yet your panels are almost nine feet. Any reason why you wouldn't make the fence a little higher, so that you adequately shield the top of the, all those panels?
Yeah, and this is really, so it's actually, the NEC code has different fence heights required, based on the, the actual panel height, and that six foot's what's required based on that, that height. So that's why specifically.
I don't know what NEC means.
That's National Electric Code.
That for safety?
That's why we have, yes.
Would it prohibit it from being higher?
Uh, no. There's nothing that's preventing us from going to seven feet or eight feet.
Only because we have residents that live across the street from RB. And though your landscaping plan is admirable, it's gonna be years before that buffer becomes efficient to adequately hide the fence and those panels. So I'm wondering, and you said it's a blackened fence?
It's a black vinyl-coated chain link.
So you can't see through it?
Mr. Lapani, you, you can see through the.
You can see.
It's a normal chain link fence, but the, the links are dipped in a, encoded with a black vinyl.
You can see through it.
Yes, sir.
All right, so it's, it's not a, it's just purely for security, not for, for hiding or screening.
Yeah, the, the screening itself is what we're trying to accomplish with buffering. But we're actually, what was shown on there were deciduous trees, and we're.
I know you switched to more evergreens.
Correct.
But still, even the Anel anchor, and that's what I do for a living, by the way.
Yeah, that's all right.
Eastern red cedars, and the Nellie Stevens, you know, what, at your spec, eight feet high, are gonna be about a foot and a half to two feet wide. At eight-foot spacing, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of see-through, so to speak. So I'm just, I don't know if there's a way of screening better, better, use better English, either by putting slats or something on that screen, on that fencing, on that side of the road, to get a better isolation of the view for the. isolation of the view for the residents across the street.
And one of the things, just to point out, and I'll go back to the array, so it's only one top edge that is visible, the, the lower part's only two feet, so it's only small portions.
You're telling me the fence is, is not a solid fence, you're going to see everything?
Correct.
Mr. May, is there a reason why we couldn't, from a safety standpoint, make that fence less see-through?
There's no safety or engineering reason that would prohibit from creating a privacy fence.
For that side?
Correct.
Would the applicant be willing to make that side of the fence, now, I can't say solid, but with some sort of screening inhibited into that, so you can't see through it?
Yeah, we'll be happy to work with your engineer to find something that's suitable. Really, we were thinking, and I think the client was thinking more of aesthetics, but I'm sure we could find something that will be pleasing to the eye. You know, I think the goal, Ryan, was eventually that the evergreens and the trees would become the focus, not the fence.
I agree, and I just know that the, the plan that you submitted, though, amicable is probably an eight-to-10-year turnaround before that becomes an amicable buffer.
Yeah, we're happy to, to provide slats or some screening that would be acceptable. We just, we'll keep, we'll make sure that we make it tasteful and make it aesthetically pleasing.
So from, I want to get some feedback from the board. There's a lot of different privacy fences available with a lot of just different price points. I'm assuming we don't want to do something as simple as putting slats into the chain link. I think it's got to be something a little bit more aesthetically pleasing than that.
Yeah, I think especially, it's got to be the last, number one, right? Because we don't want it to fall apart, so, but something, I'll leave it up to you and Mr. Mayhew to come up with a, a plan, and if there's some feedback that we want from the board, you can always send it to us or to, to the chairman or David for us to, to look at. But I think that's essentially what I'm looking for. I'm looking for something that's aesthetically pleasing, but also act as an adequate site buffer.
Okay, that gives our office a good enough guideline.
Okay.
And before you leave that topic, also, the height-wise, from six feet to perhaps at least eight feet, to cover the complete view, because again, with the property owners across the street, and you see straight through the, these units are going to be above six feet, so the height of the fence would have to go up at least just along the run of 206. And I would agree with the same concerns.
Yeah, and that would still be, I'm assuming that would still be a waiver and not a variance for the fence height.
Mr. May, you're-
I understand your concern, Mr. Rutter, which I'm not sure if we begin, eight-foot-high fence could start looking unappealing in itself. It's so massive. I don't know, you have to balance, only one end of these angled panels are going to be above the six foot and-
Where is the six foot going to die, hit, hit that corner? Any idea? You have a, you have a detail?
I'm estimating more, so this is the 95 inches to the max here, so it's going to be somewhere around this area here.
So, and this is, Ryan, this is what it will look like, correct?
Right.
From, so that's the, that's the, what you'll say.
Side view.
Side view. So to put it eight feet, I don't know if it necessarily serves that purpose. I think six feet, if you can mark it again, Ryan, where that would land, is roughly that top post, so that little bit above it is what would only remain visible for a period of time until those trees, you know, grow in. We, you know, again, it's just a matter of-
I think taking the trade-in of the, of the screening over the height with the plants eventually filling in is, I think, in my opinion, would be adequate, instead of trying to get an eight, 10-foot fence in there, which might look more obtrusive. And I don't know, David, from a waiver standpoint, is that more appealing as opposed to, or does it matter once we go over?
The, the way the ordinance is set up, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the design guidelines, so there's no criteria set up where it may change from a waiver to a variance. So still a waiver, but they have to prove that, you know, the same thing for any other waiver that this board may grant.
Then I'll follow that up with maintenance of that screening. If any plants die, they're, they're replaced.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Once again, I don't know much about solar panels, but are there no safety concerns about, like, a fast-moving car or tractor-trailer crashing into these things up 206? Has, has it been studied, or is there anything? Like, I see the fire official looked at this, but did anyone question that?
I think appropriate safeguards are in place on the roadways to, you know, prevent people from running off the road and hitting a house or a tree, or whatever the case may be. This really, I don't think adds any more effect than kind of structure being there or a sign or building, or, or a bus stop, or whatever else could be, you know, anything else along your 206. So it doesn't affect visibility, it doesn't affect driving or any of that.
So ask us another way, if there is, happens to be an impact on this, and there's a short, does a system shut down as a safety factor?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
All right, regarding the, the screw mechanism here, because I'm looking at the drawing, and it says foundation depth, but doesn't really give you a measurement. So how far or how deep is this going below ground?
So, so this one actually, for, as part of the package, the, there's several different options from the manufacturer that we have proposed, and the spec that goes in with this system for what the contractor chooses, there's actually a requirement for them to test the actual, to do a pull test to then determine the depth of the screw related to this system. So there's a, as part of our actual, the electrical package that's being proposed that will be eventually submitted to the building department, they'll have to include the actual screw foundation data that's included.
It's truly an auger.
It's an auger.
It's an auger, not a screw, like, this is really an auger. But we'll, the appropriate testing will be done.
That's usually what's used on most of our solar panels now, right? Instead of either auger posts, or they pound them in, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, there's still normal ones, a lot are still using, that we're doing that as the typical posts that goes in. A lot of times, though, that's poured within concrete.
And who's maintaining this?
So this, this is owned by the applicant.
So RB's going to be maintaining it? Okay. Yeah, the only reason I had the questions is because, you know, there's a comment here that says, refer to manufacturer specifications, and we don't have those, so. But I'm sure they'll submit it to the building plan. Yes, Mr. Bernstein?
Mr. Bernstein, can you take a look at what's been marked as Exhibit A2? And though I gave up my engineering degree a while ago, the buffer on 206 at the bottom of the page, there's a future right-of-way line. Is there a potentiality of widening 206 at this point?
Not that we're aware of at this time.
How far off the highway is this array going to be when placed?
So the, I can answer that. The array itself is, from the current property line, is 69.97 feet.
Correct me if I'm wrong, either David or Mark, or Samantha, 206 is too lane down there?
Yes.
Correct. Applicant is aware that the possibility is that it may be closer to the road if the state of New Jersey does what it does so well and starts to widen this road? And that you're going to need to come back at that point for a future, at this point, probably variance more than waiver on the setback?
I mean-
David?
I can say for us, we can push this back the .03 feet, so it would still be, that would make 70 feet, and if they take 10 feet, we'd still be within, or outside of the 60-foot buffer. So that's-
When we lose all of our landscaping?
If they did the widening?
No, so the, actually, if you go to the landscape plan that's included, we actually proposed the deciduous trees that are along the street trees are located just inside the, what would be the future right-of-way line.
I was looking at the 40-foot.
Ryan, you took, we took that into concern when we designed the plan.
Correct, that's why the street trees are placed where they are.
Also, this, this is on the inside of the bypass. I'm not aware of any plans by NJDOT to widen-
I don't think that, yeah.
Widen this road. Right, they, they're doing the widening that's after the bypass.
I understand. I'm just asking, the applicant needs to be aware of, while the, while it may ultimately end up being a municipal road, God knows when that will happen in the state. I don't have to explain, and I've got governing body members present and former on this board. The DOT works in its own mysterious way when it comes to 206. So does the applicant understand, I'm not asking the applicant to do anything with the current plan, does the applicant understand that it may have to come back to this board seeking future variances, et cetera, depending upon what happens, if anything, to this road?
Should, should, what you're describing happen? Yes, we understand that. Yes, sir.
Just out of my own curiosity, is the applicant aware, maybe, I don't know if the board is aware, and the reason this comes to mind, the solar array that's currently located on 202, north in Raritan, in front of, what is that, Ortho or?
It used to be Ortho.
Orthoethicon.
Yeah.
You familiar with that?
I'm not familiar with that facility.
That appears to be of a similar type of proposal. So I would, Mr. Mayhew, you might want to take a look to see how they're dealing with, though it is not facing any residential property, it is-
I think they're facing one of their former properties.
But the point is, I believe there is significant buffering and fencing and coverage even in front of it. I assume there is no problem in placing solar panels on this site at this level interfering with traffic, driving north or south on 206 from glare?
That's correct.
That is correct, yes.
Being on behalf of the public, I'm surprised if they-
So which way are they angled? They're angled this way? Okay.
It'll, it'll reflect on all the airplanes flying over from Newark. Good seeing you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Were we open to public?
They're itching, I can see.
Okay, may I have a motion to open to public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Going back out, there seems to be fewer public. Okay, if there's anyone from the public of which to come forward to question this witness on his testimony, please come forward. I see no takers. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the testimony that I have to present from Mr. Vizi.
Okay. No other witnesses?
No other witnesses.
Okay, so now I'll go back out to public.
Yeah, beyond that.
Final time motion.
One final time. Any comments, thoughts about this application? Again, I do not see any takers, so may I have a motion to close the public?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a requirement that Mr. Burns has to come to all future meetings now?
He obviously has some aura here that, yeah.
If I could see Eric Moore, I'd happily come. He's a good man.
With that, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any further questions, this is, this is a motion to approve RB Manufacturing LLC Solar Array File Number 24-PB-08-SPV, Block 201, Lot 11799, Route 206. As per the application submitted, the, conforming with all the reports by the board engineer and the board planner, as well as all agreements made by the parties on the record this evening.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
But I'll make that motion. Second.
Okay, any final comments or thoughts? Okay, hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Ragnar?
Yes.
Mr. Menjri?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Scobbo?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lapone?
Yes.
Mr. Chikari?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pies?
Yes.
Chair Srachin?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Glad to be here tonight, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Bernstein, good seeing you always.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Burns. Give me a call.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so before we adjourn-
Actually, you have to take one other action as well before we adjourn.
I know, I know, but I wanted to take, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lapone.
Chairman and board, it's, it's come to our attention, it's kind of a good and bad thing that one of our members is, is going to have to leave us because he's taking a position, another position in our town, Mr. Ron Scobbo, who has been a great person and loyal and patriotic American on our board, sitting through all these warehouse applications that we don't say, but he is taking a position as our code enforcement officer, so that prohibits from him being on the board. So it's come to our attention that he is resigning from the board after this meeting, because his new position starts, I think, next week, all right? And I'd just like to personally thank you for all the time you put in, sitting on this board and helping Hillsborough be a wonderful place. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, thank you for those kind words, and I'll miss these late nights here and all these smiling faces. It was a pleasure and an experience, and I think I learned a lot. I hope I helped out in, in many ways. I, I know I made a lot of motions, but thank you so much. Thank you.
With that point, actually, Mr. Chairman, this will now require other board members to actually have to make motions in second.
That, that is true, that, you know, it might be a little bit of a slower pace, though, because Scobbo was always-
He was a little quick, kind of.
You were the quick draw, so, so, yeah. So I, Mr. Ron, I just want to echo those sentiments, you know, thank you for your time here.
Thank you so much.
But you can always see our smiling faces on YouTube, so, you know.
I'll be looking out for you.
When you're suffering from insomnia, please join us through YouTube.
Again, thank you. My mic's open, so. Again, I'll miss everybody. Thank you so much. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
See you at the office.
So, quick question. Do we still have a business meeting agenda, or?
Not once you, someone makes a motion and a second.
I, I am going to let Mr. Scobbo take his ad on this and, and on the adjournment, so.
Thank you. I'll, I'll make that motion.
As to cancel the business meeting of October 24th, 2024.
Okay. Any comments? Do we need to do a roll call, or can we do affirmation?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ron, take us home.
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
I remind the board that the next meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Board will be Thursday, November 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM, of which the W word will be back. For those of you who are still eligible to vote on the Homestead or participate in the Homestead Road LLC application, that is the item, I believe, that's on the, anything else that may come up as well. Sorry. I think you're out. Scobbo's out. We may not have anybody. Sorry, I think you're out, Scoboe's out, we don't have anybody.
It's trick or treat season.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we are adjourned, good night, everybody, see you on the 7th.